So good evening, everyone. So as you can see with Call to Order, which our mayor is going to continue with, we do have a notice on our agenda, just making sure that residents are aware that they do have an opportunity to participate and watch our meeting live through Rogers. Thank you, Rogers, for allowing this, as well as this will be taped and provided on our YouTube channel. You can also participate. We do have some members of the public participating this evening. They are participating through Zoom as well as by phone. So this is an opportunity for members to provide comments or ask questions during the meeting. And any contact, we can arrange that. If there are anyone who needs any accessible versions for that, they can feel free to contact myself, and we will make any arrangements possible. Any other questions can be asked during this meeting if they're sent to me at advance by providing your full name and you're stating your question or comment that accompanies the agenda item. And with that, I will let our mayor take over.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So welcome, Members of Council and Staff, to our September 9 virtual council meeting. And welcome, public on Rogers. If you permit, I will start by reading our council commitment for the town of Penetangwishing. We are grateful for the many gifts which have been bestowed on Penetangwishing and its citizens, including the gifts of freedom, opportunity, and peace that we enjoy. May we be worthy custodians of all that has been entrusted to us. We ask that all in attendance and those who could not be here assist us in promoting good government. May our decisions as Members of Council be enlightened, and may we all be strengthened in our awareness of our duties and responsibilities. May we be granted the wisdom, knowledge, will, and understanding to preserve the good fortune of the town for the benefit of all and to make good laws and wise decisions. Thank you. And so with that, we will move on to item three, which is the approval of agenda and for the regular council agenda of September 9, 2020, that the agenda of the regular council meeting of September 9, 2020 be approved as presented. A mover and a seconder, please. Counselor LaRose and Counselor Mayat, all in favor? Thank you. And number four, if we do have anyone with declaration of pecuniary interest, then may say do so now or at the appropriate time. Moving us on to five, which is a public meeting. And so with that, I would say that this is a public meeting under the Planning Act to provide an opportunity to comment on the proposed removal of the holding H symbol for the property at 44 Willsney Act in the town of Penetangwishing. So to council, the purpose of this public meeting is not to engage in debate regarding the merits of the proposed changes, nor it is intended to be a question and answer period. It is to provide an opportunity for the public to make comments and for council members to ask clarifying questions. To the public, this is your opportunity to speak, and we encourage you to do so. Tonight is to hear comments with respect to the proposed changes, and we have a separate agenda item at council where further discussion of the amendment will occur. So with that, I would ask our planner if she has any comments on this.
Thank you very much, Your Worship, Members of Council and the public. Thank you for joining us tonight. As the mayor's indicated, we have received, there are three public meetings tonight and three applications for removal of the holding H symbol. I will just generally summarize all of them for you, but they're very, they're all similar applications in which is a requirement to proceed with any renovation, construction of lots that are on private services, that they go through a process where they, chief building official, that the septic system for the property or the septic system being designed for the property is suitable and in keeping with the Ontario Building Code. So the three applications were circulated, and to date, we've not received any comments on any of the applications. As I noted, the CBO has reviewed all the information submitted with the application and are recommending that the applications be approved and the holding symbol be removed from the property. I do believe there are some members of, or the applicants online, but I would suggest they probably don't have too much to say beyond that.
Very good. Is there anyone there who has any comments in regards to 44 Willsney Act Road? Okay, there is none, so with that, we will move on.
Sorry, Your Worship, sorry to interrupt. I just want to make sure we give them just an extra moment because Sarah may have shut off their cameras and muted them as they were being entered. So just want to ensure that none of them do have anything to add. Give them a chance to put something in the chat if they do, and it doesn't look like they do, but.
Fine, that's for 44 Willsney Act. And I'm not going to read again the public meeting procedures. We will just go on to the second one, which is actually 43 Polish Avenue. And Andrea, same comments?
Thank you very much, Your Worship. Similar comments with the application was circulated, and to date, we've not received any comments on the proposed removal of the holding symbol.
Okay. No one wishing to make any comments or questions there? So we will move on to the last one, which is 344 Watson Road.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. We've not received any comments with respect to this application either.
Okay, that's good. So with that, we will move on to number six, deputations and presentations. And this evening, we have a presentation from Rob Armstrong, Midland YMCA, realities of the COVID-19 pandemic presentation to Penetangwishing Town Council. So, Rob, if you're there, the floor is yours, or the mic is yours.
Yep, we're gonna, Sarah's gonna get them, get them rolling, I'm sure.
There we go. I'm going to ask if Naomi Murray could also be unmuted and brought into this. We have two of us making the presentation.
Okay.
There she comes.
Naomi, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor LaRue, and the council for allowing us this opportunity to present to you. As I said earlier, we have Naomi Murray with us, and that's general, she's the general manager of our Health and Wellness Centre in Midland. If we, I believe there's a slide deck to go with this, and wondered whether we could get that up.
Absolutely, yeah. So we weren't sure if you were going to share your screen or if you wanted us to. So we are prepared to do that, and Sarah will, will get that going right away.
Thank you, sorry about that. Different strokes for different folks. Last presentation we did, they weren't allowing us to put our own stuff up. Okay, can we, there we go. And do you want to go to display, or we can work it through that way if you'd like? There we go.
Just because I am sharing my screen and recording, I think this might be the easiest way to do it, if that's okay.
Okay, that will work for us if you go to the next slide, please. Yeah, that'll work fine, thank you. Just wanted to remind the folks that the YMCA of Simcoe-Muskoka is a large regional not-for-profit charity that provides a wide spectrum of services to over 100,000 people in Simcoe County. Wanted to just talk a little bit about what we've been doing the last little while with pandemic. As soon as the pandemic was declared, we began providing a safe childcare experience to families of frontline workers. We initially operated four sites around the county, including one of the children, one for the children of parents from Waypoint Mental Health Centre in Penetangwishing. As we moved forward through the stages of COVID, we have continued to open sites. And as of Monday, we are now back at full capacity across all of our service region. While COVID was on and still on, we also went to a virtual format with free fitness classes, family activities, and virtual camps that have all been well utilized over the last five months. We also continued delivering our youth employment and language and literacy programs, and use our virtual platforms to continue to work with the community's most vulnerable populations that need support. At this point, I'm going to ask Naomi, who, as I said earlier, is our general manager, to talk to the next slide, please.
Thank you. If you can forward to slide number four, please.
One more, please. There we go.
Thank you so much. So as you can see from this slide, the YMCA has a long history in and around the North Simcoe area. Our current facility started as a pool in the 1960s, and then in the late 70s, we added a facility onto those pool, onto that pool facility. So for over 100 years, we've been serving this area with a rock program. Did it move on your end?
Our communications coordinators, oh, I think there it went.
Not a problem. So we currently serve thousands of people from the North Simcoe and surrounding area, not only through our health and fitness, but also through our camps, our licensed childcare centers, our before and after-school programs, our employment services, and our counseling services for at-youth risk. Next slide, please. Everybody that comes in contact with the Y generally has a Y story, and I am not alone with that. My family was a family of origin, and I moved back here as a child. And the Y has always been a part of my life. It started originally at YMCA Camp Kitchikwana on Bosley Island, where I was a third-generation Kitchik camper. And I grew up going to all Y camps. I learned to swim, became a lifeguard. And most importantly, I've made lifelong friends through my experiences with the Y. I am a parent of a six-year-old who has thoroughly enjoyed their Y experience up until now. I really can't imagine his life without the Y, and I really look forward to seeing the impact that the Y continues to have on his life as he grows up. Next slide, please. Without a YMCA, or sorry, without a YMCA health and fitness facility in North Simcoe, one in 10 residents that make up our membership did not have access to programs and services that contribute to a healthy lifestyle. As the Midland Y is the hub for North Simcoe, we have already made a deputation to the town of Midland last week, and we will be making similar deputations to tiny and T townships in the near. At this point, I would like to hand it back to Rob.
Thanks. Currently, we have a number of challenges to overcome before we can reopen the Midland YMCA. As you probably know, the facility has been closed since late March. To reopen, we require $250,000 in capital repairs, as well as adequate membership sales to ensure our day-to-day operation. We have reached out to the local community and believe we have raised the $250,000 that's needed for capital. Recent surveys results by the YMCA of Simcoe-Muskoka indicate a return of roughly 45% of our adult membership when operating a new, an opening of facility. That translates to about 1,097 active adult users. We require approximately 1,720, of which 1,462 individuals need to be adults to be actually able to make the YMCA viable. No luck? There we go, thank you. This slide shows you the four-phased approach we are using to reopen centers in Simcoe-Muskoka. As you can look at this slide, phase one and two are financially not viable. This is the phase where we meet who are out west or in the east coast who have already started to open facilities. Phase three moves us to a more positive contribution, and phase four brings us back to near-normal operation. And it's all based again on the number of people that would come back to the facility over the early parts of reopening. Next slide, please. In terms of financial impact, over the last five months, the YMCA of Simcoe-Muskoka has lost roughly 50% of its annual revenue. In the North Simcoe area, this translates to a loss of roughly $1.5 million. Across our association, we have already begun to make the necessary steps that will take to move us back into profitability. We have made some very difficult decisions, and may have more yet to come. We are currently making presentations to all our municipal partners to inform them of our financial concerns and to ask them for upfront help to ensure we continue service in their municipality. Next slide, please. This slide gives you a financial update on the viability of the Midland YMCA from 2017 to 2020. If you look down to the bottom, you can see that over the years, 2017 to 2019, we have been a very viable and legitimate operating association. As you go to 220, 220, you can see the budget for that particular year. That's the year of which COVID has hit us and where we have not been able to move and be able to move forward with the budget, and the building has been closed. Next slide, please. So we began to do some modeling, and this slide shows you the modeling we've been doing at different capacities and different levels of membership. Each line represents a different starting point, the orange line being our best guess at the most likely scenario that we would end up with, with 40% of our members returning in the short term. Next slide, please. Finally, in the slide, we have taken the various scenarios and monetized them to see what their viability and potential loss of profit is. From July till the end of this fiscal year, you can see in the middle column an estimated loss in our Midland operation of around $358,000. That's the reforecast you can see in the third column in. And the columns towards the left give you revenue and expense estimates for a start in the new fiscal year, at either 20% of membership, 40%, or 50% of membership. Each of these estimates show a net loss ranging in the worst-case scenario of $668,000 to a best-case scenario at 50% with $216,000. Given our current losses to date, none of these options is affordable for our YMCA at this time to move forward. Next slide, please. For the YMCA to reopen its health and fitness facility, we need your help. We are asking for the town of Penetangwishing to work with all the other communities in the North Simcoe area in two different ways. One, to provide the Y with funding to help support our reopening. And two, to work with the YMCA to create a fulsome operational agreement with the Y and the surrounding areas that ensures our viability to deliver rec and leisure moving forward. Today, together, we can build on 100-year tradition of building healthier communities for the people of North Simcoe. I am open for questions, and thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you, Rob and Naomi. And Members of Council, or anyone have any questions, either for Rob or Naomi?
Your Worship?
Sarah, could you bring us back to, thank you. Yes, Madam Deputy Mayor, I believe it was.
Yes, I wonder if Rob could give us a little bit of information about your childcare operation? Is that ongoing in our communities?
It is ongoing. We, as I talked a little bit about earlier, we ran to emergency child cares during the front end of the pandemic. We then moved to, when we moved into phase three, I think we opened up a little bit more. We are now in full-blown childcare and running childcare and after-school care in 78 sites across Simcoe.
There we go, thank you.
Further questions, or anyone? Counselor Budabakar?
Thank you, Worship. Couple of questions. First of all, when were you thinking of reopening? Do you have a target date that you're looking to reopen?
We do. We are actually looking at the new year. We, as I talked earlier, we actually have a, we have to put a new roof on the building and in two new HVAC units. As I said, we've managed to fundraise that money, that's about $250,000. We want to get that going as soon as possible, but that will probably take the fall to get done, and then we would be looking at opening up in January.
Thank you. Have you had a second question?
Yeah, that answers the second question as well. I was going to ask about the funding request for the balance of 2020, but it now makes sense why it only starts in 2021.
Anyone else have questions for Rob or Naomi? No one else, that for Rob, Naomi, thank you very much for your presentation, and I'm sure the, be further discussions with our administration and council.
Thank you very much for the time, appreciate it. Have a good rest of the night.
Thank you. Counselor Budabakar, did you have another question or comment?
It was just a comment, Your Worship, but I see our presenters have left the meeting, so I'll save my comments to later. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so then that would bring us up to B, and this is a presentation from Melissa Cruthers, Risk Management Official, Risk Management Inspector, DWST 101 Risk Management Services Source Protection Authority update. So Melissa, you're up. Sarah can get you going here. Go ahead, Melissa.
Just bear with me here while I get my screen shared.
Yeah, so Melissa's going to share her screen this time. She's going to control her slides.
Good. There we go.
Okay, can you, can everybody see, see the slides, okay? Okay, so thank you very much, Your Worship, Members of Council and staff, for allowing me to speak to you today about the drinking water source protection program. For those who don't know, my name's Melissa Cruthers. I am the Risk Management Official and Inspector at the Severn Sound Environmental Association, as well as for the town of Penetangwishing. So my presentation today will touch on the following three things. So you get a very brief overview of the drinking water source protection program. I'll give you an update from the risk management perspective, as well as an update from your local source protection authority standpoint. So I'm going to start from the very beginning. So for some of you, this information's going to be new, others, it's a refresher. But so wherever you're at on that scale, just bear with me as I move through today's presentation. So to start at the very beginning, what is source water? As the slide states, source water is the water from streams, lakes, rivers, or underground aquifers. It's used to supply private and public drinking water systems, and it can come from one of two sources, either groundwater or surface water. But when we talk about the drinking water source protection program, it's the protection of municipal drinking water sources from overuse and contamination. The program gets its power from the Clean Water Act, which is provincial legislation. It is the first step in Ontario's multi-barrier approach to protecting municipal drinking water sources. And although source water fits into provincial legislation, it's being implemented across the province on a local level through local source protection plans. There are 19 source protection regions in the province, and we are a part of the South Georgian Bay Lake Simcoe Source Protection Region. So quite a lengthy title there. The region is over 10,000 square kilometers in size, consists of 52 municipalities, and has the greatest number of municipal drinking water systems of all the regions across the province, approximately 1/3. And within the South Georgian Bay Lake Simcoe Source Protection Region, there's also source protection authorities and areas. So in those regions, in our region, those consist of the Severn Sound Environmental Association, Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority, and the Noto Saga Valley Conservation Authority. Just one key fact, so Severn Sound Environmental Association is one of two non-conservation authorities who do operate as source protection authorities. So as part of the program, there's two key vulnerabilities that we're going to find. They're called well protection areas, or WAPAs, and intake protection zones, or IPZs. Within the town of Penetangwishing, there are only wellhead protection areas. So WAPAs are areas surrounding a municipal well, and the size of them is determined by how quickly water travels underground to the municipal well, and it's measured in years. So a key takeaway from this slide is that the drinking water source protection program only applies within vulnerable areas. So a few other vulnerable areas that you may have heard of before. They are highly vulnerable aquifers and significant groundwater recharge areas. There are no policies in our local source protection plan to regulate threats in these two areas, as our plan only deals with significant threats, and threats in these areas can only ever be low or moderate. Other areas that some municipalities should be aware of are issue contributing areas, or ICAs. An ICA is an area that was defined based on a parameter in the raw drinking water that will limit the ability of the water to serve as a drinking water source either now or in the future. And in the town of Penetangwishing, the Robert Street WAPA is an ICA for TCE or trichloroethylene. Also, it's a heavy solvent. There are 22 prescribed drinking water threats under the Clean Water Act, which are addressed through the source protection program. 20 of those deal with impacts on water quality and to deal with water quantity. The threats span multiple sectors, such as municipal, industrial, residential, and agricultural, so nobody is really examined. As mentioned in the previous slide, two of those threats apply to water quantity, which apply in the area shown on this screen. This area is known as the WAPA Q1 and Q2, and it's an area that could be negatively affected by a significant amount of reduction in recharge or when a significant amount of water is taken from an aquifer without returning it. So as you can see, it's fairly heavily involves, covers the town of Penetangwishing. So how exactly is source water being protected? So as I mentioned, so each region has their own source protection plan. It's a document that contains a range of policies that aim to manage and eliminate existing and future significant drinking water threats within local vulnerable areas. And on the screen here, you can see, it's just an example of how things are laid out. So this is the cover page. And then there's always, on the left, or sorry, on the right-hand side, there's threat number 15. It's related to the handling and storage of fuel. However, they're all laid out the same. They start with a definition or text for contact purposes and have a summary chart of what circumstances would be required to result in a significant drinking water threat. They're followed by policies around that threat, and these policies are the direction of how to manage the threats on the ground. So who is actually responsible for protecting it? The region's source protection committee created our source protection plan. It's their responsibility to evaluate and update it. It's the responsibility of the Source Protection Authority staff to monitor source protection, source water activities, provide education and outreach support materials, as well as support implementing bodies. The Risk Management Official or Inspector is responsible for working with landowners to identify and mitigate the risks to municipal supplies. Municipal staff are responsible for coordinating with their Risk Management Official or Inspector if development is occurring on a property within a vulnerable area, as well as implementing policies such as septic reinspection. And finally, source water protection flows right down to property owners and managers, developers and builders, to ensure they are making responsible choices in vulnerable areas. So that's your very quick source water 101 overview. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit more and switch over to my Risk Management Official hat. And so this, the screen might be a little bit overwhelming, but I just wanted to, so a lot of numbers, but there's just two that I want to point out. So the key point I want to make is that a lot of work has been done and continues to be done to track how many significant drinking water threats are in the town of Penetangwishing. Currently, there's an estimated 18 significant drinking water threats as of the end of 2019, compared to 41 that were estimated at the time of plan approval in 2015. So to break down those numbers a little bit more, two of those threats deal with, they're related to sewage pipes within the municipality. Those two threats have risk management plans, so those are completed and signed. 12 refer onsite sewage systems or septic systems, and they're dealt with through septic inspection program. Two are for WAPA-wide threats for the potential use of home heating oil, and those get handled through education and outreach policies. And finally, two for Dean apples or heavy chemicals, both of which And finally, two for Dean apples or heavy chemicals, both of which need to be dealt with by the risk manager official through risk management plans. One of which has been started. The other relates to a new business, and prior to COVID, I was working with town staff to try to gain access to this building as well as the new owners, but with COVID, that kind of stalled, but we'll, we'll continue that soon, hopefully. So just for your knowledge, risk management plans are formal documents. They lay out measures to mitigate the risk to municipal supply, and they're negotiated between myself, your risk management official, and the person engaged in the activity. Another little update, so when the source protection plan was approved in 2015, all risk management plans needed to be completed by July 1st, 2020. However, due to various regions, reasons, including the COVID-19 pandemic, progress on risk management plans across the region had slowed, but continued to be a priority. The local source protection committee has approved that as a region, we asked the ministry for a two-year extension to that deadline, which has been approved. They're now making that deadline July 1st, 2022, and I'm confident with two plans remaining that deadline will be met. As your risk management official, a portion of my job is negotiating risk management plans. However, there are additional tasks that I, that I complete, and the table at the bottom of the slide lays out some of that work that was done in 2019. That work, that work includes completing two site visits, commenting on three development applications, answering five inquiries, and starting the required negotiations on one of the two remaining risk management plans. Okay, so switching hats one more time. So now I'm representing your source protection authority. So just a quick update, so a bit of good news to share. As you can see by the policy on the slide, municipalities are required to report to the local source protection authority by February 1st of each year on implementation progress specific to the program. This is done through me reporting as your risk management official, as well as meeting with municipal staff to complete additional questions. And at this time, I'd like to thank Andrea Betty and Brian Murray for their assistance this year, and I'm happy to report that the February deadline was met. And so one last thing to bring to your attention. Due to changes to the Safe Drinking Water Act in 2018, any newer changing municipal drinking water systems now need to ensure municipal drinking water sources are protected before they come online. I'll work with staff through a process if and when this comes up, but just wanted to make sure that council, that you were aware of timing, and that this progress, process could take anywhere from six months for minor changes, to a few years for major changes or new systems. So just, just an FYI for you at this point. And lastly, so thank you very much for your time, and happy to take questions up if you have any.
Questions through to Melissa? Very concise and very well done report, Melissa. I must say that receiving those reports do not bring very many questions on. Well, we do have, Counselor Levy, yes. Go ahead, Counselor Levy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I, I do have some concerns about the West End wellhead. I have heard from a few residents who have had their house sales actually not go through, because we have a contaminated well, but apparently they are a threat. And I'd like a little more clarification on that, if you would.
Thank you through you, your worship. So I can't speak directly to that. I haven't heard those concerns myself. So as I mentioned, the whole purpose of the source protection plan is to mitigate any risks. So if there is threats on properties, they're managed. So it shouldn't, in theory, it shouldn't affect house sales by any stretch at all, because either the threat's removed, or they've put measures in place to eliminate that threat. So that, so I can't really speak more to that, but I hope that answers your question a little bit.
It does not answer the question at all. It is a reality that people in the West End living fairly close by, but not immediately adjacent to, are contaminated well, are being punished via their house sales. So it's something that perhaps council might want to look into with our planner moving forward. I understand, Melissa, you might not have the answer to that. It, it's something that people have found when they go to the county planners, and it's a grave concern to me. And I think it's entirely unfair to the people who live in the West End.
And thank you for that concern, and I'll happily follow up with, with both Andrea and, as well as maybe the county planners, just to get a better sense of what's happening.
Thank you very much, Melissa.
Further questions, to Melissa, from members of council or staff? No, there being none. Thank you very much, Melissa, for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Now, I believe, Madam Clerk, that the, the motions or something that were missed prior, if you could...
Yes, thank, thank you, your worship. Yes, and we just, you know, going through the public meeting, the members of the public, we were so focused on wanting to make sure that they had an opportunity to provide comments or ask questions, that we actually didn't go through reading the motion, getting movers and secunders, and carrying those motions related to the public meeting. So if we could go back to A, B and C of the public meeting, number five, and just read those motions, get the movers and secunders and, and vote on them appropriately, then we can move on to the next items.
Very good. And so with that, we will go back to the public meeting part of A, zoning by law amendment removal of holding H symbol for 44 Wisneac, PL 202036, that is only by law amendment to remove the holding H symbol for the property mutually known as 44 Wisneac Road be approved. Mover and a seconder. Counselor Levy and Counselor Badabakar, all in favor? Okay, that is carried. We go on to B, the zoning by law amendment removal of the holding H symbol for 53 Polish Avenue, PL 202031, that is only by law amendment to remove the holding H symbol for the property mutually known as 53 Polish Avenue be approved. Mover and a seconder. Counselor Cummings and Counselor Sinema, all in favor? You? And the third one, the zoning by law amendment removal for the holding H symbol for 344 Watson Road, PL 2020-32, that is only by law amendment be to remove the holding H symbol for the property mutually known as 344 Watson Road be approved. Mover and a seconder. Counselor Sinema and Deputy Mayor Dubois, all in favor? Thank you. So now that brings us back to seven, which is adoption of minutes not already confirmed. So if I could have a mover and a seconder, that the following minutes of council meetings be confirmed and adopted as circulated council, August 12, 2020. Mover and a seconder. I've not seen any. Counselor LaRose and Counselor Mayat, all in favor? Thank you. Moving on to number eight, consent agenda, which we have none. And number nine, matters for consideration. So the matters for consideration is Penetangwishing Memorial Community Centre reopening, RCS 2020-18, and that the Recreation and Community Services Department proceed with a phased reopening strategy of the Penetangwishing Memorial Community Centre as outlined in the staff report, and that the arena advertising rates as outlined in bylaw 2019-72 be reduced by 50% for the 2021 season, and finally, that the monthly rental fee for the concession stand operator be waived until such time that the operator deems it financially feasible to resume operations and/or staff, and the operator can negotiate new terms, making the operation sustainable. So with that, we will move it to questions, concerns. Counselor Levy? You're muted, Counselor Levy.
Can you hear me?
Now we can, yes.
Okay, thank you. Wonderful report, very concise, very clear. My only concern is leaving the concession stand agreement up to the operator. I understand, goodness knows I understand how difficult this has been for business owners. But I think when the arena is open, we start charging the concession owner at, or concession operator. I've never in my life seen a contract when tenant, a little odd. I am, as you know, I'm a business owner. It's been a tough go, but I, I find this very loosey goosey and a little concerning. I, I would like to hear from my colleagues on how they feel about having the operator make the decision on when she pays rent. That's all.
Sorry, your worship, I just, I just realized we didn't get a mover and a seconder to have this discussion, so maybe you want to do that and then get back to the discussion.
Very good. Thank you. Mover and a seconder. Counselor Clu and Counselor Cummings. Okay, now, all in favor?
Well, not just yet.
Well, we don't need to call, just to continue the discussion.
Yep. Okay, further comments or concerns on, on Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. Perhaps you could ask our recreation director to elaborate somewhat on the very concern that Counselor Levy has. I think opening up the arena is absolutely a great idea. I think it certainly is an avenue for the youth of our community to have something to do. So I'm in full agreement, but perhaps Sherry could give us a little background on the decision in reference to the concession stand. Thank you.
Hey, Madam Director, if you would?
Uh, thank you through your worship to the Deputy Mayor and Counselor Levy. So the concession operator has technically not signed the agreement at this, at this time, and they do have an exit clause built into the concessions, concession stand agreement. So I've had extensive discussions with her. She does not want to, she wants to continue to, to service the arena and have a great relationship with the town. She does service the bulk of municipalities around us. None of the other municipalities are, are charging her. Midland was charging her a small amount, but I believe that that is being revisited. The other piece of it is that I did consult with Public Health about concession stand operations as well as opening the arena. It is, the intent of it is a community center, not a restaurant. Their recommendation is that we don't have food service happening at the same place as exercise. And unless we're providing a segregated, separate seating area, they don't recommend that we allow her to permit to reopen. So part of, for all of those reasons, is why we've recommended that we wait until such time that it makes sense during this global pandemic to open, open up the concession stand, but also recognize that if, if she, to see her side of the picture, if she can't make a go of it, she's just going to pull the plug anyhow, and then we will be looking to potentially secure someone to use that space. And we don't believe that's very marketable at this point in time, so our, our approach is to work with her so that it's mutually beneficial to her and the town and the user groups when they can get in and use the facility.
Thank you, Sherry. Very good, concise report. Counselor Levy, you have further question or concern?
Just a clarification. I appreciate Sherry's response, and I accept it, and I will support it.
Thank you. Very good. Further questions, concerns or comments in regards to the reopening of our community center? I, I can certainly say that I, I will be supporting this, and I, I'm hoping that the members of council will be agreeable to the reopening on October the 5th under the guideline of the Provincial Ministry of Health and our staff to monitor it. Any other further comments, questions, concerns? Counselor Badabakar?
Well, thank you, worship. Yeah, I have a couple of comments I would like to make. First of all, I want to comment about the staffing that's outlined in the report. It talks about a recommendation to add 80 facility attendant hours per week. A portion of these hours would be used to
They happen up there, so that, that will require further sanitizing, and I'm not totally sold on having volunteers doing tracing in our building. We have to meet the public health guidelines, so that concerns me somewhat. And with that, I might ask our Director of Recreation if she has further comments on this. Sherry?
Sure. Through your worship to Counselor Vonnabankor. So we did consider other models. We actually started our discussions with adding additional facility operators and looked, we've always felt that the arena was staffed at the, at the bare minimum and have, have struggled traditionally just to offer the services that we usually do in, in a non-pandemic setting. But we, you know, we looked at, see what would be the, the bare minimum of what we think we would need to introduce and thought potentially that facility attendance would be the solution. So recently, there are a variety of models being operated out there on a continuum. And recently, starting on Friday, one of the municipalities took the lead to engage public health to start weekly meetings with arena operators to talk about their interpretation of the provincial guidelines and directives, and they strongly recommended that the facilities manage this active tracing of, of participants in the facilities, the contact tracing themselves, and not leave it up to the user groups. They said if there's a pandemic or an outbreak, things will get real really fast, and they would expect the facility to be able to deliver accurate information, you know, at, at that point in time. The other complication is that the body, person, volunteer or staff member that would be doing the screening and sort of stationed at the entryway would be doing some disinfecting of those places as well, reminding people to wear masks, the expectations around, around mask wearing and social distancing. And there'd be no limited means of holding volunteers accountable to that. Lastly, if we have groups on the ICE, we might have, be running a Zumba class or something upstairs in the Brian Orser Hall. And we wouldn't expect a nice user group to screen and keep track of the numbers upstairs in the Brian Orser Hall town run program. So we feel that it's still the municipality's responsibility to take on, to take on those tasks. I think that those are the, the bulk of why, why we headed in this direction.
Thank you, Sherry. If council will permit, I think, you know, that, looking at this, and probably the answer for this thing would be for me to go backwards and maybe deal with each of the three separately, so that I might ask that the final one, that the monthly rental fee for the concession stand operator be waived. So would ask for a mover and a seconder on that? No one?
Sorry, your worship, just, just to make, make things complicated. So I just want to, we do have, already have a mover and a seconder on this motion as a rule.
Yeah.
So are we, are we hearing that, that members of council want to separate that, and are the movers and secunders?
Unless members of council are comfortable with just moving the whole thing, that we have a mover and a seconder that are ready to support the entire package with our reopening October the 5th with the conditions that have been set forth.
Yeah, I mean, usually my recommendation to you as the clerk would be if, if I was hearing members of council saying, generally, I'm looking forward to passing this, but I really don't like this piece, then we could kind of move through the process of, of breaking it down, but, but...
And we're going to go with the whole package, Madam? And we're going to go with the whole package, Madam Clerk, and I'm going to call the vote on all in favor. One, two, well, cards up, please. I'm not. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four, five, six. It, it passes. Carrie's. Thank you. I can ask those that are opposed, but it is passing six to three because I'm also in favor.
Your worship?
Yes.
There was not a call for a vote when I asked to speak?
Well, that's fine. Counselor Cummings, go ahead.
Thank you. I was just looking at the facility attendant hours. You're talking about two contract facility, facility attendants, are we not?
Oh, well, yes.
Facility attendant is not working 80 hours.
Come, Madam Director, can you comment on that?
Thank you, worship. Yeah, we're asking for an additional 80 facility attendant hours. So currently we have two, we have 40. So we have traditionally had two part-time staff at 20 hours a week each. We haven't decided yet when we refine our plan of how we would operate, whether those would be two full-time bodies or whether we do a full-time and two part-time. We're not, we haven't fine tuned to that aspect yet, but it would be, it would be 80, 80 facility attendant hours and they would be contract positions. They wouldn't be permanent additions to the staffing complement.
Okay. To Counselor Vadabalkar, I see you ask, request to speak again.
Thank you, worship. I had another point that I wanted to make. And, you know, I appreciate the Director's response to my question and, and I realize that the facility could use additional hours. So I understand the rationale. I made my point and I thank you for the, for the response. I'm also very supportive of seeing the arena reopen. And I know the date was set as October 5th. And in discussions with members of the community, I understand the degree of consultation that's, that's taken place with respect to the user groups. And I understand that they're pleased to see the facility reopen and they're, they're working toward that date. I have a two-part question. My first part of the question is with respect to if the dehumidifier is up and running and the ice is in before October 5th, excuse me, if there were, if there were, if everything was in place, would we have the ability to rent ice prior to October 5th? Or is that date cast in stone? And I guess while I have the microphone, if I can use that term, with respect to the phase one and phase two components of the plan, it's mentioned that other groups would be part of phase two, the rental of other groups. So the first group would be bodies with, sorry, groups with governing bodies. And then it would be, phase two would be open bookings to private groups. So if I want to use an example of some guys want to get together, play a little shinny for an hour, they wanted to rent some ice, just a few guys, just, just some shinny. As I understand this, this would be as part of phase two. So given the pent-up demand for ice, is there ability to, is there the ability to move that component into phase one where people who may want to just rent an hour here and there can, can do that? So two-part question. Thank you.
Again, Madam Director, do you have a response for that?
Thank you through, to your worship, to Counselor Vadabankor. So the October 5, the, the October 5 date was set in order to provide staff enough time to put together our processes, communicate to sort out, and then communicate to user groups how we anticipate opening and operating the arena around processes. So we haven't been able to put pen to paper yet and, and fine tune that. So we need the time to do that. The other would be to onboard staff, onboard them and get training done and get them comfortable with the procedures before we open the door. So we think that we need October 5 to do that. When I did reach out to the user groups to see how much ice time we thought that they could book, we could do the financial analysis, you know, I provided that, that date as a target to give them to work towards. So I haven't received any requests to open sooner potentially. I know there, there are folks that may want to. And we can certainly keep that back of our mind, but I would hate to commit to anything sooner without getting our, our plan in place and our staff hired and trained and comfortable. The other piece, your second question with respect to shinny, I, I would like to keep that in second, second phase of reopening. Again, you know, we're not putting onus on the user groups to do screening and those pieces, but there is still onus on, on user group with a sense of organizing how play will happen in those pieces where a shinny, I think would require additional lever, level of monitoring for staff. And we want to make sure that we're comfortable with our primary user groups before getting to that point.
Counselor Vadabalkar, let's answer your questions?
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate that, your worship. Again, I'm fully supportive of the facility opening and anything we can do to make it easier for our user groups to get back on the ice. I think we can, we could do that. And certainly I'll leave it in the command team's capable hands to work out the specifics and see what we can do to see that happen. So thank you very much.
Very good. Counselor Vadabalkar, and I also am very pleased to see the report and the report coming forward for the reopening because as you may well know, I have had countless number of great payers coming forward and asking if and when we were going to reopen the arena. So this is great news, I think. And so with that, I did have a mover and a second. And so I will call the vote once more for all in favor. And that is Carrie. Thank you.
Thanks, your worship. Unnecessary, but I appreciate that.
Carrie, for the second time?
Well, I had more, I had more yeses this time. Okay, presentation and consideration of report Committee of the Whole, a Committee of the Whole report August 12, that the recommendations contained within the Committee of the Whole report related to Recreation Community Services Section be approved. And we need a mover and a second on that? Or are there any questions or concerns? Mover is Counselor LaRoe and second is Counselor Levy, it looks like. All in favor.
What, your worship, didn't you miss section B that had to do with the municipal transit enhanced cleaning?
Oh, yes, I did. Yes.
Sorry, I thought that's what you guys were moving and seconding.
No. Okay, we move on back up to B, which is the Municipal Transit Enhanced Cleaning, MTEC Transfer Payment Agreement, RDS 202023, that the requests for recipient information letter be submitted on behalf of the Town of Bennett, uh, Town, after which time a transfer payment agreement with Her Majesty the Queen in Ride of Ontario, as represented by the Minister of Transportation, for the provision of municipal transit enhanced cleaning fund for the Town of Penetangusheen Transit System be signed, and that a bylaw for the transfer payment agreement be brought forward for council approval. A mover and a second. And I might ask our Director of Transportation to comment. So I have Counselor Sinema and Deputy Mayor. And before we go for the vote, I will ask our Director of Transportation if he has further comment on it.
Thank you, worship. Other than what's provided in or detailed in the report, this is a funding program that's been released by the Ministry of Transportation to assist municipalities in their cleaning and disinfection and the provision of PPE for their transit staff. And the, the cost allocation is based on a ridership and population-based approach. And the report in front of council tonight is to recommend we enter into this agreement to, to receive this funding.
Very good. Thank you. Are there any questions or concerns to Brian? If none, all in favor? Thank you. That is Carrie. So now we will move on to presentation considerations of report of committees of the whole. And the first one was that the recommendation contained within the committee of the whole report related to Recreation Community Services Section be approved. Questions or concerns? None. Mover and a second. Counselor Rose, Counselor Sinema, all in favor. That is Carrie. Recommendations contained within the committee of the whole report related to the Planning and Development Services Section be approved? Any questions or concerns? That there are none. Mover and a second. Deputy Mayor and Counselor Clu, all in favor. Thank you. That the recommendations contained with committee of the whole report related to Transportation Environmental Services Section be approved? Concerns or questions? Mover and a second. Counselor Mayat and Counselor Levy, all in favor. Thank you. And then we move on to the recommendations contained within committee of the whole report related to Finance Corporate Services Section be approved? Any questions or concerns in that section? There are none. Mover and a second. Counselor Vadabalkar, Counselor Cummings, all in favor. Thank you. Moving on to 11, presentation and considerations of report special committees. There are none. Motions of which notice has been previously given. There are none. Notices of motion? There are none. 14, consideration of bylaws. Moving on to bylaws. Bylaw 202039 being a bylaw to amend zoning by law 2002 as amended in the Corporation of Town of Penetangusheen to remove the H symbol from 344 Watson Road. 202040 being a bylaw to amend zoning by law 2000 dash zero two as amended of the Corporation of Town of Penetangusheen to remove H symbol from 43 Polish Avenue. 202041 being a bylaw to amend zoning by law 2002 as amended of the Corporation of Town of Penetangusheen to remove H symbol from 44 Woolseyak Road. 202242 being a bylaw to, to authorize the extended use of sidewalks and boulevards and repeal by law 2014 dash 35. And 202043 being a bylaw to authorize the entering into a license agreement with Clarence Morrell for the use of town lands for the provision of food and beverages to members of the public. That the Council of Town of Penetangusheen introduce the following bylaws. And that bylaws be read a first time deemed to be read a second time and third time. And Carrie?
And sir, your worship, before you call the vote on that, I just noticed you said 43 Polish Avenue in 2020 dash 40. I'm sure it's just a small technicality, but just want to make sure council is aware it is 40, it's not 43, it's 53 Polish Avenue for the bylaw 202040.
Yeah, 53 Polish Avenue is correct. Okay, so you've heard all the bylaws. All in favor. Thank you.
Sorry, I don't think we have a mover and a second.
I didn't? Moved by Counselor Vadabalkar and Counselor Sinema. Now all in favor. Questions from, period, from the media and the public? I don't know if we have any. I see no. Announcements and inquiries. Counselor Mayat?
Thank you, your worship. Actually, I have two announcements. First announcement, the first announcement is, has to do with the, our boys at Transportation, Jody being the lead hand, the beautiful job that they did on the My Street cur drive in Spawn, doing the culvert sodding and all that. They were here at seven o'clock in the morning. They were working hard where there was warm raining. They did an excellent job. All of the people on the streets were very happy with it. And I know Jody did, had to deal a lot with the, with the homeowners, but everything was solid and everything. They did everything great. So big applause to the, to the staff at Transportation. They did an excellent job. Very proud of them. The second item is Carrie, are you on? Carrie Rubillard, our treasurer?
He's there.
So Carrie? This is something that, that I did. And just to show you an example of how far, you know, little things can go, is I noticed, everybody knows where I work at the License Bureau. And I noticed that the town had sold two vehicles that we had put up for auction, which council had agreed on it. Everything went fine. But then when the customer came in, of course, the staff that worked with looked at me, says, Mike, this is the plate portion for the town. And I said, okay. I said, I'll bring it back to the town and started looking at the plates. And I called Brian. I said, where are these plates, Brian, by the way? Brian says, well, they're in the office. I said, well, what are you going to do with them? Well, why do you want them? I says, you've got money coming back. And here's an example, just a little example on one plate that I cancel, the town's getting back $66. It's not bad. Second plate I cancel, they're getting $150 back. That's pretty good. Third plate I cancel, they're getting back $441. So here's just a little thing that maybe, I don't know, maybe it's a seat they could put into the CEO's head and our, our department head saying, little things like this can go, you know, a long way. 600 bucks. These are little things that we could try to, you know, save the town some money. I don't know. I don't know if there's any other way. But this is something like, for example, here's 660, over $600 that's coming back to the, to the town on plates that, I know it's not the staff job to do. What do we do with plates? I, we just got lucky because that's what I do for 11, but I got it. But here's 660 or 50 dollars coming back. So maybe there's other little things that, you know, the CEO can maybe look into with the department heads, like, you know, another example, like, you know, we're paid so much for, for crash falling. Did we pay for 90, 90 yards or 85 yards? Well, if we only got 85 yards, you charge us 90 yards, the money we can save. This, just something I'm trying to, you know, instead of spending, standing, spending, let's see if we can save some stuff like that.
Please that you caught it and that the money is coming back to the purpose of the Town of Penetangusheen. Very well done.
Can you, can the CEO make sure that Carrie's not there? But if you get those three checks from the Minister of Finance, you'll know why. I've got to a CGL.
Mr. CEO, would you have a comment on it?
Thank you, worship. Hopefully you can hear me okay. I appreciate Counselor Mayat's comments. And certainly we will, we will take this as an opportunity to improve our processes. I guess, I guess we could say that we're fortunate that we have a counselor that is in the role that he's in. And certainly I think I speak for staff that we, you know, we do appreciate Counselor Mayat's comments and his, his appreciation or, or regard for the situation that we're in. And certainly we'll take this as an opportunity to, to improve our processes. And, and again, just thank you, Counselor Mayat, for bringing that forward. Just the other thing, Merida Ru, if I might, is just with respect to Counselor Mayat's, kudos to the, to the public work staff. We will, we will see that those sentiments get passed on to the public work staff and, and certainly make it known that, that, you know, the appreciation was made in, in council, in the council meeting. And, you know, too often it's the opposite that we hear. And so when we do hear some good news, it's certainly great to pass it on to our staff. So I will certainly see that, that those remarks get passed on to our public work.
Thank you.
Further announcements? Counselor Levy? You're on mute, Counselor Levy.
Am I good now?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you. I would like to, first of all, acknowledge that Deputy Mayor Dubow has filled in wonderfully with the business recovery, both with Penetangusheen, with Midland. She's covered for me because I've been too busy recovering my business to involve myself. But I would like to ask Anita if she could expand a little bit on the Love Our Local program, which I think is fabulous. Thank you, Anita.
Deputy Mayor, comment?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Levy. Yes. We were supposed to get T-shirts and I asked for everyone's size and I was going to deliver them, but I found out I found out today that they were not available. So we'll have them for our council meeting in October. Yes, it's been brought forward. There. I haven't really gotten a lot of information from Sharon Vegg at EDC. But they do have radio announcements that are ongoing. Everything started the first of September. And certainly encouraging people to shop local when they can. The Chamber of Commerce has also been very involved. And they started a series that they'll be running every Wednesday. And today I was, did tune in to a presentation by Diane Ball from Arbers talking about her business and how she's managing through this COVID and other businesses every Wednesday morning at 10 o'clock. So that was, that's a good move as well because Diane was very generous with her comments about other businesses in our community. So other than that, Councillor Levy, as soon as I get more information, I will share it with everyone.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Very well done. Councillor Clu?
Thank you, your worship. A quick one from me, just a reminder that we last meeting approved our community improvement plan. The appeal period is now passed, and so we are open for applications on on that funding. So hop to it.
Excellent. Thank you. Councillor Sainte Ma?
Thank you, your worship. I just want to bring to everyone's attention that we are undergoing right now the Arena and Recreation Centre study. And it's really important for everyone to have their say. There is, I mean, it's again, it's really important to get your input to help us plan for the future of our indoor recreational facilities in Penetang Machine. There is a short, short feedback form and survey that's available online through Survey Monkey. You can find it through the town website. And they, you can also give written input to our Director of Recreation and Community Services, Sherry DeJarden. And on Saturday, September the 19th, from 10 till noon, there will be an in-person meeting down at the Rotary Pavilion, which is across from the Splash Pad and in in the Rotary Champlain Wendat Park. And that again is to for people to have some input and to ask any questions and to get some more clarification. Should it rain, it will be held at the Curling Club. They are asking you to pre-register, so pre-register with with the town office. And when you attend the meeting, make sure that you wear your mask.
Thank you very much, Councillor Sainte Ma. And I guess for myself, I probably have a couple of announcements that I would like to make. And I guess one would be that I was very saddened some time back to hear of the passing of Michael Dubo. And let everyone know the great loss to our community from this gentleman. And my second announcement is que j'aimerais. Merci la francophonie et avoir le plaisir d'avoir aussi le drapeau franco-ontarien ce matin pour la province au nom de la ville de Penetang Machine. And what I've said was that I was pleased this morning to have the honor and the pleasure of raising the Franco-Ontarian flag representing the province on behalf of the municipality and the Council of Penitent Anguishin this morning. And with that, if there are no further announcements or inquiries, I will ask for a, oh, we haven't. Who? Nope. I just saw thumbs up. That's all.
Thumbs up. She's happy.
Okay, so confirmation bylaw, that confirmation bylaw 202044 be signed and sealed by the mayor and clerk. Mover and a seconder. Councillor Sainte Ma and Councillor La Rose, all in favor? Motion to adjourn. That's Councillor Cummings' gig. Okay, Councillor Cummings, we are adjourned. So with that, members of council and staff, we will move into our committee of the whole. So moving on to the agenda for Wednesday, September 9, 2020, committee of the whole. Call to order and go to approval of the agenda. So Committee of the Whole Agenda, September 9, 2020. That the Committee of the Whole Agenda for September 9, 2020 be approved as presented. Mover and a seconder. Councillor Mayat and Councillor Sainte Ma, all in favor? Carry. And with that, presentation and delegations, there are none. Now the council information package, council information package, September 9, 2020. That the council information package dated September 9, 2020, having been given due consideration, be received for information. And I would ask if there's anyone who would like to pull anything from the SIP.
Sorry, your worship. I know Councillor Vadimovkhar wants to pull something from the council information package, but I didn't. Ask if there were any declarations of pecuniary interest, and that may have been my missing.
Okay, how many of you are being overpaid here? Any pecuniary? Pecuniary interest to declare. There being none, then we'll move. And the SIP, so Councillor Vadimovkhar, you had something that you wanted to pull from the SIP. Are you there, Councillor?
Yeah, thank you, worship. I am G on the committee information package. It's the letter from the Protestant Separate School Board dealing with the rejection of capital priority funding request.
Okay, thank you. And I believe with that, Councillor Vadimovkhar, we did have some discussion about this matter this morning. At my council agenda review and I've asked the clerk to prepare a motion that I would expect you to move. And I will second. So Madame clerk, if you would read the motion, please.
Thank you, your worship. I will do that. One moment. Okay, it's a little bit long, so bear with me. Whereas the Protestant Separate School Board of the Town and Penitent Anguishin received a rejection to the request for the capital priority funding to purchase the disposed land and school on 51 Dunlop Street, Penetang Machine, Ontario, from the Simcoe County District School Board. And whereas the Council of the Town and Penetang Machine believes the business case provided clear details of the ongoing issues with the current Burkeville School included limited capacity, deficient land size, including 166% enrollment to school size and a land size of 2.08 acres, which is below the ministry average. And whereas the Protestant Separate School Board is an equal, is an equal to other publicly funded school, school authorities in Ontario and as such should be offered equal documentation, information and allowances to operate. And whereas the Protestant Separate School Board was unsuccessful in meeting with local MPP Jill Dunlop to discuss the opportunity and gain support in obtaining this ideal location for the Town and Penetang Machine's children and community. Now therefore, the Council of the Town and Penetang Machine supports the Protestant Separate School Board in their appeal to the Province of Ontario and the Ministry of Education to reconsider the capital priority funding request to facilitate securing additional space and land to accommodate the growth needs of Burkeville School. And mayor be authorized to send a letter on behalf of council to the minister and MPP Jill Dunlop indicating council support.
Well, Councillor Vadimovkhar, you're good in moving that motion? Go ahead, Councillor Vadimovkhar.
Yes, thank you, worship. And so just for the benefit of other members of council. When we did our section review yesterday, I raised the point that I would be asking that this this matter be pulled and discussed by by members of council. I thought it was appropriate that we indicate support for the Separate School Board in its efforts to find a larger space to operate. And so that was my intent. And that's, I thought that it would be good to to pull it and have that discussion. The CAO took that request and had a conversation with the mayor, I understand. And that's how the motion came to be formed. I am supportive of the motion and I'd be happy to to move it. So just as a little bit of background to why it's, why it's here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Vadimovkhar. And yes, I certainly concur with the move and I certainly am prepared to second that. And Councillor Levy, you have a request to speak. You're still muted, Councillor Levy? You're muted.
Got it. Okay. Should we move and second before I speak? Stacy?
Are you talking for the motion?
I haven't, I haven't called for the vote, Councillor Levy, so you can go ahead and speak. Yeah.
Okay. I, I support this motion. But as does the former principal of Burkeville, Tim Mallon. The school should never have grown to 160%. They should have limited their enrollment a long time ago. They're putting a great strain on the neighborhood. Having said that, they would be wonderful tenants of PSS. So I just wanted to put it out there that there is no way this school should have grown topsy-turvy to 160% driven the entire neighborhood crazy. But be that as it may, I will fully support having them moved out of that neighborhood. Thank you.
Councillor Levy, I don't disagree with that whatsoever. And for fact, that I know that there are a number of our schools here that are well under capacity, but then those are the ways and means and whatever the concerns are. And and right now it's to kind of support them in their quest to find somewhere where they can expand. So with that, I will call the vote. All in favor? Very good. That is carried. Thank you.
I don't know, your worship, if you had a seconder, but I'm, I'm supportive of that. I certainly moved it, but that's up to the.
I know that you moved it, Councillor Vadimovkhar, and I did second it.
Yes, your worship. I do have that. Thank you. But just as a reminder, we do need to pass the rest of the items to be received for information.
Yes, a mover and a.
I was in support.
Councillor Vadimovkhar and Councillor Sainte Ma, all in favor? Carry. Okay, moving on to section A, Transportation Environmental Services, and I will pass it on to Councillor Mayat.
Thank you, your worship. The considered agenda recommended for action that the follow consent agenda have been given due to consideration to receive for information. First item is the the middle of Penetang Machine Transit Ridership Monthly Update for June and July 2020. Second item is the Water Quality Management Services System Review minutes from September 30, 2019 and December 19, 2019. Do we have any questions, any concern? Can I have a mover? Councillor Levy, second, or Councillor La Rose, all in favor? Thank you. Passed. A, we have nothing under matter of consideration. Next item is item C, referrals and upcoming agenda. And as the Transportation Environment Systems Section endorsed the following additional existing referral for upcoming agenda and staff. You've got the three of them in front of you. Do we want to add or delete any? Oh, Councillor Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just looking at the Church Street parking and I wondered what that says. Q3 for this year. Just wanted to find out where that is. I'd like to get this back on the table so that we can get it solved before the winter. Thank you.
Perhaps our CAO could comment on that.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you and through the Councillor Cummings. I know Councillor Cummings raised this yesterday at our agenda review. And so I did have an opportunity to chat with our director. Our intention is to, it would, this report was actually scheduled to come to tonight's meeting. There are a few matters that we're just in the process of gathering and to incorporate into the report. It will, the intention is that the report will come in October. As council will recall, this was originally slated to come back earlier this year. Or I guess the end of, end of last year. And this has been deferred originally as a result of COVID and wanting to ensure that we had a means to engage the citizens and the residents that brought this forward. And so, you know, here we are. I think we've, we've ironed out all the kinks from a public, public participation perspective. And council should expect to see this report coming forward on October the 14th through, through this, through this means.
Okay, thank you, Mr. CEO. Okay, so I still need a mover. No, I think I've got a mover in a second. And do I, Stacy? Okay, need a mover. Councillor Levy, a seconder. Councillor Sainte Ma, all in favor? Pass. Thank you. And question period from the media and the public? I guess you don't have any. Back to you, your worship.
Thank you, Councillor Mayat. And with that, we'll go to number seven, section B, Recreation Community Services, and I pass it to Councillor La Rose.
Thank you, your worship. We will keep it quite brief tonight. Under 7A, our consent agenda, we do not have anything as well as we do not have anything under B for matters for consideration. So we're down to C, which is our referrals, that the Recreation and Community Services Section endorsed the following additional and existing referrals to the upcoming agendas and staff. We have one item on there, which is we're still following up with, and that is outsourcing day camp. If there are any that need or want to be added or deleted, let us know now. And if not.
Sorry to interrupt, Councillor La Rose. Just noticed a potential error, and I just want to make sure council is okay with making the change. The Penetang Kings Request to Counsel for Options Reducing ICE Rental Fees is showing under the referral items to Finance and Corporate Services, but it should actually show under the RCS referrals to upcoming agendas. So I will make that change.
I believe last.
That's okay.
I believe last meeting, it was asked that it was to be put under the Finance section.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure I have a consensus of council on that. Okay.
Yeah, that's where it's going to live. Councillor Vadimovkhar, you have a question?
No. Thank you, Councillor Rose. It had to do with the presentation from the YMCA and their request for support along the lines of what you were just talking about. Is this something that should be put on this referral or should be Finance and Corporate Services? I'll ask the question. I think it should appear on a referral to staff with with a request for a review and a report back to council.
I don't know whether it's quite appropriate for us to have it at our section. We're not looking at any of the programming. The report tonight that was made from the Y was for monetary money only. So I think it should probably go back to Finance for that discussion.
Thank you, Councillor Rose. I'm good with that, too. So we'll bring it up then. Thank you.
Councillor Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering why it's going to take so long to get a follow-up report. It says Q3 2021 for the Boys and Girls Camp. They did a presentation how long ago now? And we're waiting for a report in September of next year.
I don't believe it's of next year. Oh, it is. Now, whether that has to do with COVID, we could check with Sherry. She probably would be able to provide us with a bit of an update. Sherry? Oh, yeah, she's still there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through to Councillor Cummings. Yeah, it's 2021 because we're doing a one-year trial with the Boys and Girls Club. They're going to operate our day camps next summer. So we're, we have referral item to follow up with council once that trial is over.
Does that do it for you, Councillor Cummings?
That makes sense.
Soon as she said it, we all remembered. Anybody have any other issues? If not, seeing none, we will ask for a mover. Councillor Sainte Ma? Counselor Sanama and a seconder, Counselor Mayat. We'll call for the vote, all in favor. And that is carried. And there are probably no questions from the median public. So, Your Worship, it's back to you.
Thank you, Counselor LaRose. And with that, moving on to eight, Section C, Planning and Community Development Services. And with that, I pass it on to Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. Our consent agenda is quite lengthy. Our first item is the Bylaw Monthly Activity Report for July. Our second Business Recovery Task Force meeting, our second meeting that we had. We have a report from the Animal Control Monthly Comparative Report for June and July. Memo to counsel, complete application for zoning bylaw amendment, file number ZA five two zero two zero at thirty-eight Point Street. Memo to counsel, complete application for zoning bylaw amendment, file number ZA six two zero two zero at one thirty-six Fox Street. And another memo to counsel, a complete application for zoning bylaw amendment, file number ZA seven two zero two zero at seventeen Peel Street. Are any one of those items need to be pulled for discussion? Yes, Counselor Cummings.
Counselor Cummings.
Thank you. And Counselor Cummings, if you could speak up, we're having difficult hearing you.
You're muted, Counselor Cummings. Counselor Cummings, you're muted.
It's probably my earpiece.
There you go.
I'm asking two things. First of all, the report that's from the bylaw officer for July, I would like to see that for August and not two months behind. There is certainly enough time to get that report together. And secondly, I'm going to request that the bylaw officer be present in our council meetings for answering any questions that we may have regarding this report.
Well, I guess we'll take those under consideration. Thank you. So noted. I, yes, Counselor LaRose.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was just a quick question. We have this seems to be a bit of a new format for a memo to counsel about these committee applications. What is our new process? Will we be looking at those again before they come back to counsel for for voting?
Absolutely. Our director is with us, so I'll ask Andrea to speak to that.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, through you to Counselor LaRose. You may recall, I can't remember what date, a couple of months ago, we made a slight change to the delegated authority for declaring applications complete. So that was a change that was made where it's been designated or delegated to staff to declare applications complete. So in order to provide that information in a time and a matter to counsel of an application that we've received and the scheduling of a public meeting, we've done this memo process where counsel is advised of the purpose of the application, some information about who it was from, when it was submitted, and just giving you the the heads up that a public meeting is going to be scheduled and set for zoning amendment application or any type of planning application. And that's really just because otherwise I'm not sure counsel would have another opportunity to see it before it goes out to the public in order to meet our timeframes under the Planning Act. So you will see the next meeting will have the public meeting where you'll have background information in a staff report. The public will comment, and then there will be a follow-up report where counsel or committee of the whole will weigh in, I guess, at that point in time and deliberate on the merits of the application. I'm not sure if that answers your question, Counselor LaRose, but I hope so.
Does that answer?
That is perfect. Thank you very much.
Yes, we will see them again probably at our October meeting, Andrea. Yes. Good. Thank you. Further comments or questions? Yes, Counselor Cummings.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. Is there supposed to be a sign erected on the property that's looking for the zoning amendment or adjustments for a certain amount of time?
Thank you. I'll ask Andrea to to answer that question.
Yeah, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, through you to Counselor Cummings. You are correct. There's a requirement to provide notice to on the signs, both under which town has a notice posting policy. So that is within a certain amount of time from declaring the applications complete for zoning amendments. I think you mentioned something else about maybe committee of adjustment. They have a slightly different sign. And those signs should be up within, depending on the applications, about two weeks ahead of the actual meeting date. So that's the timing for committee of adjustment signs. For public meeting signs for zonings or subdivisions, those larger applications, it's a minimum of at least twenty days, but usually longer period of time before those notice signs are posted on the property. But you should see them go up, and it is a requirement that they go up.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Seeing none, I do need a mover and a seconder on accepting. I have a mover moved by Counselor Levy, seconded by Counselor Clu. All those in favor? Harry? Thank you, counsel. Matters for consideration, we don't have any. Our referral item that the Planning and Community Development Services Section endorsed the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff. Our first item is vacant property, vacant municipal property inventory update, our graffiti policy update and review of our signed bylaw regarding hate symbols and hate speech. Is there anything to be added to that list? Seeing none, could I have a mover? I have Counselor Clu, seconded by Counselor Sanama. All those in favor? Harry? Thank you. And our last is question period for the median public, of which we're not in a position to have that. So Your Worship, I will send things back to you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. And we go on to nine, Section B, Finance and Corporate Services, and I pass it to Counselor Vatibonker.
Thank you, Worship. Just referring to the Finance and Corporate Services agenda in your package, where the first item is a matter for consideration. It's pertaining to the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence Cities Initiatives. There's a motion there that the the Great Lakes and Cities, St. Lawrence Cities Initiative report be received for information that two thousand and twenty-one membership and the Great Lakes and St. Lawrence City Initiative two thousand and twenty-one be approved. And that finally, the cost of twenty-two hundred dollars for a twenty-twenty-one membership be included in the twenty-twenty-one operating budget. So this is an organization that a number of municipalities around the Great Lakes participate in, deal with issues that pertain to the Great Lakes. A number of municipalities around Georgian Bay are members of this of this initiative. And it's being put forward tonight for committees' consideration. So may I have a mover and a seconder, and then I'll open it up for discussion. So moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Sanama. And now I'll open it up for any discussion. Anybody wish to speak to this motion? Madam Deputy Mayor, then Counselor Rose, and then Counselor Mayat.
Thank you very much, Chair Vatibonker. This is a great initiative. As the report stated, we have been a member in the past. I think it's a great organization, and we should and hope counsel will support this initiative. It may very well give us opportunity for funding in the future. So I'm very, very pleased to see it here this evening. And the report was a good, good report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, Counselor Rose, and then Counselor Mayat.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have been in this a number of different years. And over the four or five years, I believe, that we were in, I never seen very much value in what we actually received at our end of of the deal. I wonder, because of COVID, because we're going to be short of some cash, that this may be a year for the rest of this year and the upcoming year, that we maybe give these applications a little more scrutiny to decide whether is this something we really want to fund, or is this something that we really need to fund? So until we have that greater discussion, I would not be comfortable in passing this to make it a an automatic budgeted item for two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mayat?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Counselor Rose. I prefer to see it come up on budget and have a little bit more discussion on it. Like, for example, tonight, we just had like the YMCA. And look at the amount of money that the, you know, they're asking for. And like, we have to stop giving, we have to stop donating because we're going to have problems of our own with this COVID. You take just like our arena, for example, like I don't know how much we're going to be down with the arena. Where are we going to get the money for that? So we have to stop giving on items that we can let go for a couple of years. And I think we start should looking after our taxpayer, looking after our town, because we're going to be in trouble. So I will be not I will not be in favor of this motion tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Mayat, Counselor Levy, and then His Worship, Mayor LaRue.
Thank you very much, Counselor Vatibonker. I would support this, but only at budget time. This is not the time to start supporting different groups. So we can bring this to the budget.
Thank you, Counselor Levy, Your Worship.
Thank you, Counselor Vatibonker. You know, we did belong to this organization for many years, many, many years. And for some reason or another, through the process, we did pull out, and it's been a few years since we've been asked to take part again. You do know that the great majority of the municipalities, surrounding municipalities, are all members of this Great Lakes Initiative. And I might point out to members of counsel, and I agree with Counselor LaRose, that during the COVID period and such is a concern that we have. But in the final analysis, it is being asked that we that the cost of the twenty-two hundred for twenty-twenty-one membership be included in the two thousand and twenty-one operating budget. So it would come up for discussion in the twenty-one budget. So I'm going to support it as such, and that it would move it to discussion in the twenty-one budget.
Thank you, Worship. Any other questions or comments on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Any opposed? And we have two opposed. So the motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the two thousand and twenty-one budget goals and objectives and guidelines. And the motion is that the report, Finance two thousand and twenty eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one Budget Goals and Objectives Guideline Report be approved, and that staff be directed to prepare the two thousand and twenty-one draft budget in accordance with the town's Budget Procedure Policy, two thousand and twenty-one budget timeline and contents for this report. So if I could have a mover and a seconder, and then I'm going to turn it over to our treasurer to give the highlights of the report. So I have moved by Counselor Cummings, seconded by Counselor Sanama. Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to to Carrie, and she can go over the highlights of the report. Carrie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So in August of this year, counsel approved the town's Budget Procedure Policy and the two thousand and twenty-one budget timeline. And the next step being this this report before tonight is the two thousand and twenty-one Budget Goals and Objectives and Guidelines. So historically, what we do is we present this document after we take a look at what the Consumer Price Index is at, as well as calculate our own municipal price index. We've also included in this report for counsel and public information the results of the budget surveys that we initiated for the public budget survey, as well as counsel budget survey, and and all management have also participated in a budget survey. So the attachments to this report for your information are the results of those survey summaries. They will also be presented at the two thousand and twenty public consultation meeting that we're going to be holding on December eighth of this year. So in terms of in terms of the budget goals for two thousand and twenty-one to assist counsel in guiding them through the budget process, but as well as to assist management who are currently working on their draft one of their budget documents to bring forward to the first special committee of the whole budget meeting with with committee. Just to go over a little bit of history, so over the past ten years, counsel has successfully balanced the fiscal management of the town by maintaining an average town tax increase of one point eight percent per year. When we look at what that what that tax increase was for in terms of the town portion of our tax levy, it includes operating capital, infrastructure, debt repayment, policing, and community contributions. When you look at the overall tax increase, when you take into account the towns portion, the policing portion, the county, and the provincial portion for education, the overall tax increase over the last ten years on average has been zero point three percent. So when we did some analysis this year, based on the July two thousand and twenty CPI index of zero percent, if you compare that to where we were at July of last year with the with the CPI, it was at two point one percent. So certainly, COVID impacts have obviously impacted our economy and the Consumer Price Index. When we go through our exercise of calculating our municipal price index, as we as we do, our basket of goods, per se, are slightly different than those of the individual consumers. So when we look at our expenditures anticipated every year, we do calculate our municipal price index and present that as a goal for staff to bring forth a counsel-approved budget goal. This year, for two thousand and twenty-one, we've calculated an estimated municipal price index of one point five percent. That relates to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars of budget increase. And our preliminary estimate for the overall tax increase is currently zero percent. So if you recall, last year, our municipal price index was two point five percent. Counsel did direct staff to proceed and bring forward a budget last year or for this year, two thousand and twenty, at two point five percent. Counsel then reduced that tax increase when we set the tax rates to one point three percent. And we were able to come in overall at zero percent for two thousand and twenty. So basically, what I'm presenting this evening is a municipal price index calculated at one point five percent, where we anticipate that the end goal overall is to wind up at zero percent overall for the taxpayers. Just briefly mentioned that included in the report are our priority budget guidelines that typically we follow every year. We did add in a new guideline this year related to COVID and the impacts that it's had on two thousand and twenty, the funding that we have received from the provincial and federal government that will offset any of those impacts this year. In addition, we have been directed and we will transfer any remaining balance of funds that we did get from the government into a COVID reserve to offset ongoing financial impacts that we will be seeing in two thousand and twenty-one. In addition to that guideline, there are other guidelines in the report that are high priority by counsel and staff that we've heard in the past. and certainly that have come out of key documents, uh, corporate documents, um, that have been approved by council, um, such as the Community-Based Strategic Plan, the Service Delivery Review, um, the water, wastewater five-year financial plan, our development charges background study, et cetera. So, um, if you have any, uh, questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Just, uh, maybe you could just elaborate before I open up the questions. With respect to the survey results, in particular, the survey results from members of council that are attached to your report, are you looking for any discussion or direction on any of those survey items tonight? Or is that just for information in terms of what was responded to? And we'll get into that, uh, later as we go through the budget process.
Yes, certainly, Mr. Chair. Um, so the, the budgets are prepared, again, as I mentioned, for the public council and management. Um, they are attached this evening for information. Um, so that as we proceed through, uh, the budget process for 2021, um, everybody at that point, uh, there is a lot of information, um, but at that point, um, hopefully, everybody has been able to go through them and, and read through them all. Um, I, I have read through them all. There will be a summary, um, a shorter summary presented, um, at our budget public consultation on December 8th. But certainly, the information is there to, to guide, um, council and staff as we proceed through the budget process.
Thank you. So I'm going to open up to questions now. Any questions or comments from members of council? Okay, I don't see any. So, um, again, I wanted to, uh, thank, um, thank Madam Treasurer. Oh, Counselor Cummings? Okay, I see Counselor Cummings. Have you put up your card to speak?
Yes, I have, actually.
Okay, I saw it there. So, go ahead.
Good. Are we dealing with all three, the budget summaries and everything, right now? Just want to be clear. I know you're muted, Counselor Vadavankar.
Sorry. Uh, yes, I believe, uh, they're all under that, uh, report. Uh, there are attachments to, uh, attachments to the report.
Okay, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, I'm not sure whether all counselors have, uh, had a chance to read our budget survey summaries or not. I always go to the other part because I think some of the surveys don't give us the picture that we really need. I was noticing that aside from getting rid of us, um, there are three main concerns, and that's maintaining what we have in this town in regards to infrastructure, our roads and sidewalks. Um, a lack of police and bylaw enforcement and the arena seem to be prevalent in all of our surveys. So I just thought I'd point that out at this point. So if counselors are thinking about, uh, our budget process uh, and priorities, maybe we should think about some of these things.
Yeah, Counselor Cummings? Yeah, thank you. And that's why I asked the question about, you know, how do these, uh, comments get integrated into our budget process? So I think it's very good, uh, feedback, both from the public and from members of council. And as we go through the process, I would think members of council would speak to these items as we go through the various, uh, go through the various, um, iterations of our budget. So thank you. Any other questions or, or comments from members of council? Okay, well, we have a mover and a seconder, so I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none?
Sorry, Counselor Vadavankar, I didn't, uh, I didn't capture the mover and seconder.
Oh, uh, it was, uh, just, I think it was Counselor Cummings and Counselor Sanama, I believe, uh, moved and seconded at the beginning before we handed it over to the treasurer.
Thank you.
So did you get the vote? You got the vote? Okay, so we're good. Okay, thank you. So moving on to, uh, the next item on our agenda. And this is, uh, pertaining to adopting the song as the town's official theme song. And the clerk has written, uh, a very good report on this with a recommendation that council accepts the gift of the Penetang Machine Song, written by Charles Duquette about the town of Penetang Machine as the town's official song. So before I open it up for, uh, discussion and questions, I'll ask for a mover. Uh, Counselor Cummings, a seconder. Counselor LaRose, thank you. And, um, Madam Clerk, did you have anything you wanted to speak to the reporter? Are you prepared to take questions, uh, right now?
Absolutely prepared to take questions.
Okay, thank you. I see Counselor Levy's, uh, card up, so Counselor Levy, go ahead.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Vadavankar. Uh, Madam Clerk, are you able to play that for us right now?
Um, I'm sure I could, uh, muddle my way to get it, uh, up and running if council wants me to.
We asked you to sing it, actually.
Oh, you want me to sing it?
And Dan?
You're my favorite.
Do we need to call a vote on that, or is that?
I think I'm losing connection.
Sorry to put you on the spot. I thought you might have it.
No, I mean, I could certainly, um, attempt to probably take.
Why don't we do that, just for shits and giggles?
Sure, okay. Uh, do you mind pausing, uh, Mr. Chair?
Sherry, or Stacy, I've got it.
Someone's playing.
Oh, poo. Stop. Oh, just a sec. That's what I get for hitting any buttons. Ah! It will start in a sec. Get in there.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah, no, I know. Welcome to my nightmare. Oh, YouTube.
I'm really sorry. I asked that.
Yeah, I did have it, and then I, I didn't think it was loud enough, so I.
It looks like Jess has it ready, if you want to let us play it.
Yeah, Jess, go for it. Do you like me, though? Give it a shot. Okay.
We're not hearing it, Jess. I think it might be playing for you, but it's not coming through.
Oh, I am so sorry I asked this.
Mr. Chair, perhaps we could go on to the referrals and then come back to it when someone gets it? Thank you, Counselor Cummings. Excellent suggestion.
We can do better next week.
Great.
I thank you, whoever was able to get that to, uh, to play. So, any other comments? Yes, um, Madam Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if at our next meeting, I know Mr. Duquette is not with us any longer, but certainly, his wife and family, I think, will be very moved that we are accepting this as an official sign and a song. I wonder, Stacy, if we could somehow put together, um, maybe a little presentation to her. I just throw that out to see if we could work something out. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Excellent suggestion. Madam Clerk, is that something that could be arranged?
Certainly, if, uh, council votes to, uh, agree to, um, have this as our official song, uh, we will contact the family and give them the, the wonderful news. And, um, I think that's a fantastic idea. We could have them potentially with the approval of the mayor and the CAO, of course, um, have them on the next agenda as a, as a presentation of sorts and let them, you know, maybe, maybe play the song again with less glitches, maybe play the, um, and show the, um, the album cover, which they did provide, and it is in the agenda, but we could show it on the screen for the public to see if, uh, if that's what council would like to see, we can certainly arrange for that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other comments, uh, or questions? Okay. Seeing none, we have a mover and a seconder, Madam Clerk. So without further ado, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Thank you. So moving to the referral list, uh, there's a number of items on the referral list. Uh, two of them, I think, can come off. Um, there is the, uh, song designation, and then there's the Great Lakes, uh, and St. Lawrence Cities Initiative. And then I spoke a little bit earlier about the request from the YMCA. So I'm not sure if anybody else thinks that that should go on, but, uh, I'll leave it there. Is there any, um, any other comments in terms of the referral list anybody wants to, to speak to? Counselor, uh, Counselor Clu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I am disappointed that the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities hasn't come up yet, um, though I realize that COVID has presented certain obstacles. I am, however, uh, really challenged by the fact that we're waiting so long for the Huron Airport Commission. I think it's time we need to have a discussion about the airport. I, I was hoping to see it before this year's budget process. Um, and now I see we're waiting to Q1 2021. So I, I find that quite disappointing in the age of COVID.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Clu. Counselor Rose?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just wanted to let Counselor Clu know it's not the commission that, uh, we are waiting for. It is a, um, a joint meeting between the CAOs from the three municipalities, uh, that have undertaken uh, this review. And we at the commission are waiting for their final approval to come so that we can comment on it. So it's not the, uh, the airport holding up the show this time, it's the, uh, three CAOs.
Counselor Price.
So thank you, Counselor Rose, for that explanation. So, uh, the CIO Lees has, uh, raised his hand. I note that there's three months left in, in Q4. Uh, so perhaps, uh, something could be brought forward before the end of, uh, Q4. But I'll let the, uh, the CIO, uh, speak to this matter. Mr. CIO?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hopefully, you can hear me. I was having some microphone issues. I think I'm seeing some heads nod. Um, I, I did speak a little bit about this at the last council meeting, that this is a joint report between the three municipalities. Uh, we had some conversation last week, uh, at the CAO's level around bringing forward a joint report um, between the three municipalities. Our hope is to work towards finalizing a staff report, uh, in, uh, in the next, uh, several weeks. And the hope would be to try to get this in front of, uh, our three councils jointly, uh, before the end of the year. Um, but, uh, I think as, as been identified, certainly, there have been other challenges that have presented themselves in the, in the age that we're, or the environment that we're working, uh, under. But certainly, you know, I, I think I mentioned it before at a previous meeting. Certainly, I will endeavor to do what I can, uh, to get in front of council as soon as possible. Uh, I know that there are, there's at least one other municipality as well that is eager to get this brought forward. And certainly, I know that Counselor LaRose is the rep on the Airport Commission. And I have had a few conversations about this over the last several weeks, so certainly, he's been well, well in the loop with respect to where we sit at the CAO's level. And certainly, I, I take Counselor Clu's comments, uh, and, and we'll take those back to my CAO's group.
Thank you, Mr. CIO. So in light of the comments that we've heard, is it, is it more appropriate to move this from Q3 2020 to Q4 2020 instead of Q1 2021? Would that be, uh, more appropriate in terms of, of trying to have it wrapped up by the end of this year?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair. I don't know if that question's for me or, or your colleagues. Maybe I'll just offer, certainly, council can change the date. I mean, council, you know, whether, with the date staying at Q1 or the day changing to Q4, I will certainly endeavor to do what I can, uh, you know, in terms of the one-third that I share to get this in front of council ASAP, uh, you know, before the end of the year. Uh, if it's a comfort level for council to change uh, the timing on here, um, I'm, I'm certainly more than fine with that. Uh, whether the timing's changed or not, I will certainly endeavor to get it in front of council before the end of the year, uh, through, uh, through consultation with my colleagues at the other municipalities.
Thank you, Mr. CIO. Counselor Levy? Oh, your microphone.
Am I good?
You're good.
Okay, thanks, George. Uh, it's important that we get this in pre-budget. I, I get very impatient and with the post-budget asks, so let's get this in pre-budget. So that would be 3, uh, 320.
Okay. So I, I have a sense that there seems to be some interest in moving that from Q1 2021 to Q4 2020. So that's that one. Um, is there interest in putting the YMCA, uh, request here, uh, for, uh, review and recommendation by staff? Madam Clerk, I'm not sure of the process to get it added on, so maybe you can just refresh my memory?
Yeah, so if you would like it moved, uh, added on, you would be moving, you would need a seconder to get it added, and then vote to, to get it on the actual list.
Okay, well, then I'll, uh, I'll move it. Is there a seconder to put it on the list? Oh, um, Mayor, uh, Mayor LaRue has put it, uh, seconded, so I've, I've moved it. Uh, Mayor LaRue has seconded it. Uh, Madam Clerk, we deal with that one separately? Or do we, is that the way? Okay, so, uh, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, I need to, haha, Madam Clerk, I'm not, I'm not seeing all the cards here. Haha. Okay, let's start again. All cards down. Okay. All those in favor? So I'm seeing one, two, three, four, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six cards in favor. Those opposed? One, two. Okay, so it's added, uh, to the, the list. Madam Clerk, it was a vote of seven to two, as far as I can see on the cards. Okay. Any other items to be, uh, referred? Seeing none, we talked about the amendments, so it's, um, that the Finance and Corporate Services Section endorsed the following additional and existing referrals to upcoming agendas and staff, uh, as amended, Madam Clerk, or is it just as, as amended? Okay, may I have a mover? Uh, Counselor Sanama, a seconder. Deputy. Deputy Mayor Dubois, any discussion on that? All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. That concludes the Finance and Corporate Services. No questions for the media and the public. Worship, I'll turn the media or the meeting back to you. Your worship, you're still muted.
Thank you, Councilor Vadavonkar, and thank you, council and staff, for a very insightful meeting this evening, September the 9th. I wish you all a good evening. I wish you all a good and happy, long holiday from here till the next meeting. But in the meantime, stay healthy and stay safe.